performance. It's like really intense, fast stuff because we have to learn like four songs and a group song in just four and a half days, pretty much. Each year I learned that like I can be myself, I can be more myself around other people and I can be more comfortable with music because I used to not be so comfortable and I was really shy, but now I'm not because I've been to this camp. So we learned the regular four songs and then we also have a small group song where like we can make our own small groups and we pretty much learn the song ourselves, memorize ourselves and perform choreography that we learned from like a high school or college kid that tries to teach us it. And then on Friday, we have a big performance and that pretty much shows off all that we learned all week and how amazing Mr. Rob is and that he teaches us so fast. I love music because it's something that I feel like anybody can do and it doesn't matter if you think you're bad, but you're not. It's for everybody. It's you get to see a whole bunch of new people and you get to meet new people, make new friends. I've made a few new friends here and it's just really wonderful and it helps you learn a lot about yourself and music.
I called to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Board of Education for June 28th, 2016. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danic?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mungard?
Ms. Mungard is excused.
Mr. Schulte?
Present.
I would note that the open meeting act is posted at the back of the room and we have two sets of minutes for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those will stand as approved. Next, under Special Reports, Presentations, and Celebrations of Success, this evening we are bringing technology to our monthly board student celebration, an opportunity to highlight our Lincoln Public Schools students. Tonight, we welcome Brent Jaras during the school year. Brent is a business teacher at the Bryan Community Focus Program and during the summer, he serves as the coordinator for the LPS Summer Technology Program. Brent will tell us a little bit about that technology program and then we'll hear from three of his summer school students. We have Connor Anderson and Alex Altman from Scott Middle School who will be in eighth grade this fall. And then we have Jacob Wyant who will be a fifth grader at Lakeview Elementary. Welcome to the Board of Education.
Thank you for having us out tonight. I'm Brent Jaras. I'm the program coordinator for Summer Technology Program. We are a five-week program that offers about 20 different classes throughout that extended time and we're also kind of an all-day program. We go from nine to four. We have a morning session that goes from nine to noon and then an afternoon session that goes from one to four. We're going to start off with showing a little bit of a video of Connor and Alex is and then Jacob is going to give you a little demonstration with Dot and Dash Robotics.
He's Alex and we both worked on that stop-motion thing and it's basically based on I have a game on my phone called Ridiculous Fishing and I must say it lives up to its name, what you do. You cast your lore, just go down, dodge as many fish as possible, which kind of seems counterproductive, and then when you're coming back up, you try and catch all of them. And here's where it gets ridiculous. Once they get to the surface, they just launch up into the air and you just like pull out a gun and start shooting them. But if you don't understand how stop-motion works, what we do, we put all of, we take all of the like characters and backgrounds and stuff and position them in like a certain place for one frame and then we move them like at most like an inch and then so they're in the right position for the next frame and put like six to eight frames per second. So that took like five and a half hours to make.
My name is Alex and some of the different stuff we did during the week is we did like the end project, like at the end of the, at the end of the week, we could make whatever we wanted and some other stuff we did was we made videos just moving things just a little bit or in spinning them and stuff like that and putting the pictures together and playing them fast. We did a time lapse one, like drawing stuff on a piece of paper and we, and then it took a picture every couple of seconds so it looked like we draw really fast. And we also did one where we would jump and then take a picture in midair so it looked like we were hovering in midair.
Jacob's going to give us a little demonstration of the robotic dash. He also has a little partner that is called DOT. Students, we had classes that ranged from fourth grade to sixth graders that got to spend about 15 hours for one week just programming this robot. We did a simple task of trying to go through a maze. We tried bowling with it to see how many pins we can knock over in 10 frames and we even busted out soccer and tried to play soccer with them also. So that is just a little taste of what we have. We offer anything from robotics to kind of a creation, kind of animation classes all the way down to intro to computer programming. So students have that early experience of just kind of getting a little bit of taste of technology. And I would also like to extend an invitation to everyone to attend, stop by Summer Technology next June. We're kind of wrapping it up this week, but pencil it in your schedules already and come out and visit us. Thank you.
Very neat. Hang on, guys. So I don't want the significance of this to be lost. The robot, what it was doing there is it was following instructions that you had programmed in. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So this is actually a way for kids to get introduced to like basic programming, algorithms, things like that?
Yep. They just, they use, the big thing, the two apps they use is Scratch and then also Tinker and they can both be accessed on their iPads, so.
How long did it take you to figure out how to make that thing work?
A day.
A day? Pretty good. Now, do you guys have parents in the audience that you'd like to introduce?
Good morning. Blue shirt, that's my dad Blake and then sitting next to her is my mom Jody. We brought Alex here.
Thank you for doing that.
Oh, and then we have Jacob's mom also here.
Very good. Thanks for coming. As a professional nerd myself, I know that we are not making enough people with computer science skills. We have more jobs than there are people that have the skills to do those things, but also just knowing how much technology is just becoming a part of our daily lives. It is exciting to me as a board member to see that we have these kinds of opportunities for kids. So thank you all very much for coming and showing us what you're working on. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, that brings us to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Kathy?
I move approval to consent items 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3, Human Resource, Routine Business, and Option Enrollment Student Application.
Thank you. Barb?
I second that.
Any comments? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danic?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, we have items for first reading from Planning Committee, newly annexed property to the city of Lincoln. Lanny?
All right. So this item comes from the Planning Committee where I serve with Matt and Barb and the property under consideration is called Highland View. It's 22 acres just north of Highway 34 at about northwest 20th Street. It's west of Sco Middle School and for the 2016-17 school year, we are recommending Cooser Elementary School, Sco Middle School, and North Star High School for that property. And at this time, we'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
Kathy?
There's no one living in there at this point, correct?
Look, Scott, that's correct.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, that'll be back for action at our next meeting. Next, item 9.1.2, the 2014 Bond Program Project Recommendations. Lanny?
This is also coming from the Planning Committee. So in December 13th, 2013, we updated our 10-year facility plan and in preparation for the 2014 bond request, the superintendent's facilities advisory committee had previously identified over $300 million in facility and infrastructure needs and the board determined that not all of that could be funded within the existing levy. And so at that time, we divided the plan into three tiers and Tier One projects, which included the Career Academy, Moore Middle School, Wy Song Elementary, and many other projects, were to be funded primarily by the $153 million in bond funding. Substantial bidding is now complete on Tier One and staff has estimated that we have roughly $14.5 million in funding available for Tier Two. So tonight, from the Planning Committee, you will have recommendations for Tier Two projects at Belmont Elementary School, Lincoln High School, Northeast High School, and the Zoo School. And with that, I will turn it over to Liz and Scott to detail the projects and answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that introduction. I think it's also always worthwhile just to look over our shoulder a little bit on the longstanding process in Lincoln Public Schools. So this was actually some verbiage from the bond resolution in 2013, which was in the 2014 bond, where we talked about in 2005, this district started a process of long-range planning for facility needs and that work was updated periodically during that decade. It was reaffirmed with a strategic planning goal in 2011 and through that strategic planning process at the district level, the work session was presented, as Mr. Boswell indicated, with the over $350 million worth of projects. A stakeholder group was formed that helped shape the question before the community that the school board crafted throughout that fall over a series of work sessions. Almost every board meeting, there was a work session for those fall months in 2013 and the Planning Committee has closely watched that work and we're now at the place where we can look back at that plan where some tough choices were made by the board on what to prioritize and we're fortunate enough, given our framework, that we're able to add some more projects to the list. The first priority the board gave us during that timeframe in 2013 was that the bond issue would not plan for a levy increase. So the first priority was what would the scale of the bond issue be, the number of dollars we could make available without a planned levy increase? So we developed a revenue budget that would have the estimate for the proceeds from a general obligation bond issue. As a reminder, we're still working off of estimates. We still have $33 million left to sell from a cash drawdown, cash flow perspective, but we think we're pretty solid in our revenue estimates. We also identified other sources in the school district where the district had proceeds that could fund the plan. So looking at the revenue side of the house and then also looking at the expenditure side of the house, which is where the projects come in, that's where we're able to come up with funds available for Tier Two projects.
And just to maybe touch on a few of those, and Mr. Boswell mentioned that, the new Moore Middle School in conjunction with the YMCA, Wy Song Elementary, which will open this fall, Nuremberger. We had additions at a number of schools, Meadow Lane, Pershing, Norwood Park. There were 15 projects in all. We updated Seacrest, if you recall, so that was the major projects. And then on the infrastructure side, and I apologize for not covering every one of these, on the infrastructure side, we did the security technology upgrades to all of our facilities and that was probably one of the more complicated projects we've ever taken on, even though it's one that you really don't see. But we did that in about a year and a half after school hours, a major infrastructure project. We did some bleacher work. We did some roofing work in the infrastructure scale, secure entrances at all of our buildings that needed them. So all of that work has been bid to date and that's where we have anticipated that we would have the, on a conservative side, the savings of $14.5 million were in a sense the available, funding available to take on Tier Two projects. So with that, I believe you have a document in front of you that shares with you the projects that we are recommending. Mr. Boswell, mention those again. And before I walk through each one of those, and I won't take a lot of time, I want to say a couple of thank yous because getting to where we are today took a lot of work and so it wasn't just one of those status quo, easy to come by. First of all, you as a board need to be thanked for your vision to continue to emphasize facilities because I've been around here for 17 years and you've been doing it the entire time that I've been here as a board. Facilities have been important. You've emphasized that, you've stressed that, you've went after the funding to accomplish that and I think we have great facilities to show off to not only just Lincoln, but to the country in terms of where our facilities are and how they stack up against all other school districts. So thank you for that. I think we need to thank our community because they continue to support bond issues and we've passed a lot of bond issues in the last 30 years and the last two have been overwhelming past bond issues. I mean, the percentages have been in excess of 60% to in a 30-some percent and that just doesn't happen across our state. So our community supports what you do and the decisions you've made, so that's really important, so we want to thank them. We also have local contractors and local design firms who've been very active in helping us get these projects accomplished. And I think I mentioned this a few months ago, all of the projects that we currently have under construction, and I think there are 13 right now, major projects, every one is being led by a local general contractor. So that says a lot for keeping the dollar within our community and the investment within our community and all but maybe one or two of the design teams are from Lincoln as well. And so we think we have a good track record. We have a great relationship with all of those companies and so that's also a tribute to we're good to work with and good to work for and so that's a positive. And then lastly, I just want to thank the LPS team because there's a lot of staff behind the scenes that work on these projects. It isn't just the Dr. Standish and myself that you see at the board meeting. There's a lot of people at facilities, at custodial, at computing services, at purchasing, and I know I'm going to forget some, food nutrition services. There's a team effort on every one of these projects to get them done and to show that we've got these all done and I think they're prized projects and still have money left over to take on Tier Two projects, that's quite an accomplishment for that large group to take on. So that's just a thank you for all those and I appreciate the time to do that. The projects that Mr. Boswell has mentioned is Belmont Elementary School. It's an IAQ project, but we also have square footage needs due to population needs at that facility. There are only a handful of projects left that I would say need indoor air quality projects and then some of the very first ground source heat pump buildings are now approaching 20, 21, 22 years. And so Belmont Everett and Park are three of those buildings that were remodeled prior to us taking on geothermal projects and they're kind of on our shortlist of indoor air quality projects to get done. We believe from the staff side and planning has supported that, that Belmont needs to be the highest recommendation of those three. That's one of them that's on this list. Lincoln High and Northeast are both ITE support projects that really are in response to the Career Academy. And so after building the Career Academy, we have space available in both of those facilities where we can do some industrial tech ed modifications within those areas of the building so that we can better utilize those for classes within those facilities. And so there's about a million dollars or slightly more attributed to both of those facilities. It's really based on a square foot basis of the projects that we need to incorporate there. And the last one on the project list is the Zoo Focus Program. And as you know, the Lincoln Children's Zoo and Parks and Rec and the city of Lincoln are engaging in an expansion to the zoo. We've been present there for a long time. I think it's been about 18 years since that focus program was established. We'd like that program to grow. It could grow on the middle school side as well as the high school side and we want that program to grow and we'd like to reinvest in that along with the Children's Zoo Master Plan and so we've got a little over $3 million targeted for that. The other three items that are on that list have come from planning and I think this has been a long-range discussion about acquiring sites. And you know, it's been a number of years since Lincoln Public acquired a number of school sites and they've positioned us well. And I recall a number of the discussions back when they were purchased that, wow, you paid a lot of money for that property, you paid way too much money. And now when you look back in terms of what we paid and what the value of that land is, we've saved ourselves and this community a lot of tax dollars in terms of buying land back then, it may be $3,000 or $4,000 an acre and now it's worth $40,000 an acre. And we have the ability to position ourself right where we need to be to build new schools as our community grows and we know it's growing. So those are on here for new elementary sites, new middle school sites, and potentially a new high school or high school sites. We have to have that vision not beyond the next three to four or five years, in the next 10 or 15 or 20 years, based on how we're growing. So those are on the list. We've not said where because there are a lot of locations where we need to position ourselves and not only can we use bond money to do that, we also have non-restricted building fund money available and we even have land that we can leverage to repurpose or trade or sell to acquire additional properties. So that's kind of our list that we're proposing and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Kathy?
As we look at acquiring new sites, we have, what'd you say, 11 unused sites across the city, is that right?
I believe that number's correct.
And some of them are internal to our current workings, so we have some that probably are long-range, either not going to be an LPS property. Can we use this property to acquire other sites, make changes, kind of like we did out on Holdred Street? I think we changed a site and moved it so it was more central to a development east of 84th, way east, I think.
Yep, that is one option. There's a number of formulas that we can use to acquire new sites and some of those internal that potentially could be surplus, probably have value where you could acquire two or three perimeter sites of the same size or acres based on the value difference.
It's not really a question, it's more of a long-range thing. I would hope that we would continue to look outward at the edge of the city for a lot of these sites. I can remember when they built Cabot Elementary, everybody was laughing, saying, nobody's going to live there. And then the kids that lived across the street from Cabot had to go to another school because somebody actually moved in south of there, way south. So I would hope that we would continue to prepare ourselves for those and prepare the public for it because I don't think there are a lot of people in Lincoln that actually understand how much we've grown unless they drive across the city. They don't see the growth. On my side of town, they say, what do you mean, we're past Yankee Hill? And I was like, we're just sawtill-o. They think Sawtill-o's still the country. So I think sometimes we have to explain it a little more for those who don't get out and about, especially our seniors who may not have the ability to do that.
We plan on taking advantage of those sites and looking for future and I think it's a tribute to planning again, that's why they're on this list. It's become even a higher priority that we continue to put effort forth to look for new sites.
And the other question I have is on the zoo addition. How many students are we hoping to accommodate by the time this addition is done?
I think the program for the zoo school that we've provided thus far will accommodate 200 to 250 and that's about double what the current number of students are that have been attending zoo school.
So how many classrooms does that have, roughly?
I believe there are eight classrooms as part of this and a symposium space which could accommodate really a double lecture-type space, so 10 classrooms could be accommodated in this new program.
It always helps for me to explain it when I say, no, we're adding eight classrooms to there as opposed to an addition at the zoo. Because why are you adding on at the zoo while we're adding eight classrooms? That makes more sense to people than that we're investing in them, so thank you.
Barb?
Yeah. I'm very supportive of the Science Focus Program, but I was wondering... I'm very supportive of the Science Focus Program, but I was wondering, are the plans for the zoo expansion final yet? And would that impact our ability to move ahead with constructing a new facility for the Science Focus Program?
The plans for the zoo expansion are not final at this point. I think our schedule would be for you to vote on this recommendation in about a month, the end of July. And I think that that vote would want some contingencies built in based on the need for certain agreements to be made between the city and the zoo before we would ever make a financial commitment. I think it really helps the zoo know that we are committed to the project, though, by the end of July, so they can continue moving forward with design. So I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, that does. I think that actually added a little bit more nuance than when we were in planning on going and adding in some contingencies on that decision. That makes me feel more comfortable about it. Do you have any idea what, or am I jumping ahead, the estimated groundbreaking timeline would be? Do you have any idea?
Well, this is a complicated project, and we have a very aggressive schedule on it. If everything worked out accordingly, they may be doing some minor work this winter, but a real groundbreaking on the triangle would probably be in the spring of 2017.
Okay. And then I thought Kathy brought up a really good point about going and informing the public about the city's growth. I hate going and asking staff to do yet one more assignment, but just maybe an idea, perhaps when you take the board out to tour the growth, could we have someone like Doug here go and accompany us and do some filming so maybe we could put it on our website and on TV?
Yep.
Matt?
It's been fun to work on these projects. I just, maybe a couple of comments related to the Zoo Focus Program. I think we are all, we're all very proud of the focus programs we have. I think one question we just want to keep in mind is that currently our board objectives have us reviewing all of our focus programs next year. And so I've just asked several times during planning that we try to keep our facilities of the Zoo Focus Program somewhat flexible over these next few months as we maybe look at those focus programs to potentially facilitate middle school. All of our focus programs are all at high school. And so I think there's some opportunity to add focus programs at elementary and middle school that would really benefit kids in Lincoln. So that's just something I think we need to keep in mind as we move forward, that currently it's high school. I think most likely that's probably what it'll continue being. But if we're going to put some significant investment into a focus program that then we're also assessing at the same time, it'd be good for us to keep that flexibility in mind.
Other comments? Lanny?
Adding to my colleagues on the planning committee, I would just like to note enrollment growth, we've been looking over a number at the beginning of every planning committee meeting this year, 4,101 students in the last five years. And as you know, growth is expected to continue. I did also want to address just a little bit and add some thank yous to Scott and his team. When we took this bond issue out to the community, we promised we'd pinch every penny, and we tried to find savings in the projects so that we could go down out of that Tier One and into Tier Two. And it's through your work and the work of your team and the work of our contractors that we have been able to find funding for Tier Two projects. And that's pretty exciting. I think it's also fulfilling a commitment that we made to the community to complete as much of the work that was identified by the superintendent committee as possible. And I also just wanted to touch on the recommendation that we pursue site acquisitions. We specifically wanted to include all three levels, elementary, middle school, and high school, because that growth is not just occurring at one level, it's occurring across our entire district. And I think if you think back to those that came before us, they had the foresight to plan ahead and to purchase property in advance of the need. And that's saved taxpayers, it's saved the district millions of dollars over the years. I think it's our turn to do the same. So that concludes my comments, and this comes back to us at our next meeting.
Great. There are no other comments? Then this will come back at our next meeting, as Lanny said. Thanks, guys. Next, we have items from the superintendent. Item 9.2.1, proposed 2016-17 pay rates for substitute and miscellaneous employees. Eric?
Yeah, and I would invite Robbie Seabird up. We have two HR items for your consideration this evening, and we will be able to walk you through both of those.
I'm happy to present the Nutrition Service Workers Association tentative two-year agreement for you for tonight's consideration. I'll briefly go over the major tenets of the agreement, and then I'll answer any questions that you might have at the end. For the first year, 2016-17, the salary increase is 2.88 with a total package increase of 3.62. For the second year, the salary increase is 2.89 with a total package increase of 3.63. The health insurance will increase by 4.9%, but that will be covered by the package as all the other groups have done as well. The group declined the open enrollment, and so they will not be doing the high deductible plan, as the majority of the other groups are not as well. The biggest change is they have agreed to eliminate the emergency leave that they currently have of three days, and they are going to two special leave days. As you recall, currently custodians and pares did that in the last two years, and so they're just adding to that as well. And then there were a few minor editorial changes that we made, which we make every year. And that is the, those are the only changes that we have for this agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Questions?
And just for clarification, that was for 2.2.2. So we flipped.
We're talking about the nutrition, sure. So that's fine. Can we move on then to the substitute, teachers' substitute and miscellaneous employees?
We are presenting the annual sub and miscellaneous pay rates for you. Generally, we work with all of the directors and supervisors, and if we haven't heard anything, we normally go up 1% on all the pay rates from year to year unless the budgets don't allow. For athletics, they normally stay at the same rate. This year, for all of the rates, it's going up 1% except for two groups, and that is the substitute for office professionals and for paraeducators. That was based on the recruiting and retention needs of the district, as well as, after talking to the hiring supervisors, there was a greater need to up that based on input. So these are, I would present before you and answer any questions.
Thanks, Robbie. Did you guys see what we did there? We did nutrition services first, then we went back to the substitute teachers.
I just noticed, unless I'm overlooking, is the agreement for 2.2 attached?
I didn't see it.
I mean, I know we just got the report, but I just don't see it.
Yes, we don't have the attachment up yet. So will we be able to get that to the board members as soon as possible?
Yeah, that's a first reading, so absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Good point. Kathy?
As we look at substitutes, is there any particular employee field that we have an issue at getting enough people to fill those positions? I know when I've gone to council of urban boards of education, there's been a lot of discussions, having trouble getting certificated staff to substitute in classrooms, and they've had to use non-certificated staff or what we would call hourly employees. Do we have any issues with that?
We haven't had issues with needing to use classified staff for certified staff positions. We have had times during the year when our certified staff substitute pool is what we believe adequate, but we're not getting enough coverage. And so that's, that depends on how many jobs that they'll accept, so on and so forth. On the classified side, two of the areas where we have experienced needs in terms of numbers of subs is with pares particularly, and then also obviously with office. That was, that was an area where we felt like we needed to make some adjustment.
And so are we doing some type of recruiting for these positions that we should tell people how they can apply for them?
Yeah, we're always recruiting. And we will advertise in places where we feel like we can get coverage, obviously in the papers, you know, the World Herald, the Journal Star. But the best place that we point people is right back to our website. There's always a link in our website, on the HR website. And we create pools for these positions because they're always open. So people can apply at any time, and we are absolutely looking for people in those areas.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, those will be back for action at our next meeting. Thanks, Robbie.
Thank you.
Next, we have on the action items tonight, item 10.1.1, high school attendance boundary recommendations. Lanny?
And I will begin by moving approval of item 10.1.1, the high school attendance boundary recommendations.
Matt?
I'll second it.
Lanny?
And then just briefly, this is the change that we discussed at our last meeting, where we would take the Clinton Elementary attendance area, which at the high school level is currently assigned to North Star, and we would reassign that to Northeast High School to help address overcrowding at North Star.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, we have item 10.2.1, contract with Explorer, the LSW abandoned orchestra Hawaii trip. Is there a motion? Lanny?
Move approval of item 10.2.1.
Barb?
I second.
Questions or comments?
Just that Matt and I are going along a shepherd.
Are you? Okay. We'll expect a full report.
Just kidding.
Seeing no other comments, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. All right, that takes us all the way down to our informational items and reports. Lanny, is there a report from the Career Academy?
Nothing from the Career Academy, sorry.
And then we have our monthly update from the superintendent.
Only, the only thing I'll report is that June is gone, and 4th of July pretty much represents the first half of the summer being completed. And July is a time of the year where a lot of vacations are taken here at LPFDO. June's a planning day. But as I was looking at the calendar earlier this evening, you know, this third week in July, we're welcoming new leaders to the district. We'll be doing some orientation with them. And first week of August is new staff. And we're going to have between 350 and plus new teachers to the system. So we'll be gearing up for that, and then we'll be in at 2016, 2017.
Thanks, Steve. All right, next is the monthly financial report. Are there any questions for staff? Matt?
Let's see. I did have a couple of questions. On page four of this, which reflects the balances, let me just pull it up real quick here. I wasn't, I was expecting Steve to report a little bit longer, but I guess there's not much schooling session right now, so. Page four reflects the balances. I see, is this the first time that we've had a nine-figure balance on our general fund? Is that, is that, is that something that...
Well, keep in mind, we only have two years of history here.
Yeah.
So I would hesitate to say first time. But you are correct that May 31, it is 101, so.
Okay.
Page four.
Yeah, so there's 100, because there's 112 million in cash plus 11 million liabilities, so 101. That's 25% of our annual budget. What is it that we generally are trying, generally recommended for government agencies, public schools to have in cash reserve?
Well, keep in mind, this would be a high point of the year with property taxes coming in.
Yeah.
So this would be a high revenue time, and then we would spend down till the fiscal year change. So it would be beginning or ending year balance would be your threshold you would really use.
Uh-huh.
But we use, in Lincoln Public Schools, the three-year negative. So we look at a three-year forecast, one-month negative is really our model.
Okay.
Our percentage, there is state statute that holds us to a 20% that includes the depreciation fund. So that would be that spend-down period, that's what's filed on our uniform budget document.
Okay.
So that includes both general fund and depreciation fund. We do not have like a arbitrary benchmark at any point in the year. It's the decisions we make today we can pay for in the future with the three-year cash flow balancing out the valuation swings with the three-year revale. That's why we have that rolling three-year. So with the efforts we made for the cash reserve this year of the 10 million increase and the proposed drawdown of 5 million next year, I would not be surprised to see a high number at this point on the financial statements for this year.
Okay. Then another question on page eight. Non, what's it really, what's it, I think it was page eight. Non-revenue. Is that page eight? Generally, we've had, I mean, I think last, I can't, I'm not, I'm not seeing it, I didn't highlight it. But in the past, we've like had nothing, and all of a sudden, we've got $1 million in there. Can you just help me understand what that non-revenue line is?
This line at this time is specifically attributed to E-rate.
Okay, page six. Thanks, Lanny.
Traditionally, we receive E-rate, which is the universal service fund, where we pay a fee, and then schools get things for internet access and off of bills. Typically, we use it as a discount on a bill. One of our service providers had us collect it in a reimbursement.
Okay.
So we actually received revenue, a check for E-rate, which is not the usual way we do E-rate. But with the amount of wiring, wiring access points, switches, the things we were doing in the school district, we had one transaction with one vendor that required us to use the reimbursement approach. So this is representing, it was over $800,000, I want to say maybe $824,000 of E-rate reimbursement.
Okay. And that's a portion of the general fund, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you for clarifying that. I guess I wanted to see a 956% increase, I think. Wow, that's quite a, quite a change. I wonder what's going on there.
Kathy?
Just so the community understands, when we talk about our revenues, we're all used to paychecks that come once a month or once every two weeks. But for the school district, the biggest paychecks we get, or tax receipts that we get into our revenue streams, come at the end of April and the end of June, July, because people pay their property taxes in two increments, usually April and July. Am I correct? So what we do, it's basically like, those are our big paychecks or paydays, if you're trying to understand simplistically, the family budget. And we have to save money for the rest of the year to pay for the other nine months till we get back to the next April. A little bit comes in, and I know that's simplistic, but they don't send it to us incrementally in 12 equal portions. We get it as it comes in, correct?
Yeah, and that's 50% of our general fund that we receive predominantly at two pay points during the, during a year.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Next, that brings us to announcements of upcoming events for the board, and we have nothing. July is typically when staff will try to squeeze in a little bit of vacation time, so I think our meeting schedule is a little bit light. My memory is that we have a new teacher breakfast coming up sometime in the next few weeks, and that'll take us to our next board meeting at the end of July. Next is public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, that takes us to closed session. There is no request for a closed session, and that means that we are adjourned. Thank you.